Call of Wilmer City Council meeting to order for Monday, October 17th. Roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmas.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion. All in favor, signal to the CNNI.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion carries. Consent items, Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, tonight's consent agenda consists of, for council's approval, the city council minutes of October 3rd, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Board minutes of October 10th, special city council minutes of October 11th, the accounts payable report for September 20th through October 11th, resolutions for certifications of unpaid utility charges as a lien, and council's information, the building report for the month of September 2022.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second. A discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Open forum. Do we have anybody that signed up?
No, we do not have anyone on.
Public hearing, ordinance amending Chapter 9 nuisances and Chapter 17 surface water management. I'll open the public hearing at this time, and I'll call on Sarah, Ms. Seitzema. Did I get that right?
Absolutely.
Did one thing right tonight.
Yeah, so I'm just stepping in for Jared tonight. The ordinances, changes that he introduced two weeks ago, all dealing with storm water, so this is all required from, the state updated the MS4, municipal separate storm sewer system permit that we have, and in that, they're requiring some ordinance updates for municipalities. So, in Chapter 9, we're gonna add a section that, dealing with pet waste, that all owners of pets have to pick up after their pets from any city property, any city parks, boulevards, all things like that. And then, Chapter 17, we need to update some definitions and the best management practices, and then we need to add a section in the prohibition of illicit discharges for industrial facilities that are non-MPDES permitted for storing salt and salt-containing materials outside.
So this is a public hearing. The public hearing is open. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak to the ordinance amendment? Anybody here wishing to speak to the ordinance amendment on Chapters 9 nuisances and Chapter 17 surface water management? CNN, in hearing then, I'll close it, bring it to the council table. Council, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt an ordinance, assigned it a number, and publish. Discussion. Councilmember Nelson.
Just a question. The pet waste is brand new. We have not had that before, no?
It has not been in our ordinance before, no. There have been some signs posted, you know, requesting it or encouraging people, but it has not been in ordinance before.
Just for comments or questions. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sarah, would you be willing to just elaborate a little bit on Chapter 17, as it pertains to industrial discharge? Just some examples of the types of facilities that might be utilizing water that would contain that sodium chloride?
I see. Yep, so it's not, it is, if there are commercial or institutional or industrial facilities that are storing salt for winter maintenance, road, parking lot, things like that. Yep, so if you have a big pile of salt because you are one of the winter maintenance surface providers, or you're sand and salt that are mixed, there's now going to be our section in our ordinance to comply with the MS4 permit that requires it to be, for example, like, on an impervious surface, and then covered or indoors, things like that. Just best management practices around the salt storage, so that that salt is not getting into our storm water.
Okay, so we don't currently have any heavy industrial users that would be discharging large amounts of this type of material as part of their industrial or manufacturing processes?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Just for comments or questions. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
I'll make a motion to publish my summary.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, to publish by summary. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Thank you, Sarah, for your work. You always are so efficient. Next, we have an ordinance to rezone Skylark Properties. This will be introduced by Mr. Walker, our planning and development director. I will open the public hearing at this time and call on Mr. Walker for some comments from staff.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So tonight, we have before us the ordinance to rezone the properties of Skylark Mall. This is a public hearing. This was approved at, this was reviewed and approved at the planning commission, I think that was, September 21st. This was something that the planning commission stated that they would like to see. This is something that staff was likely seeing, that this would be the first part of looking at rezoning the general business district entirely and kind of going south of Wilmer Avenue, being more the heavy, intense, commercial retail, and that this would kind of fall in line with that. We talked to the big mall properties south of Wilmer Avenue with Uptown Wilmer and Skylark Mall. Skylark Mall reached out to us wanting to rezone in line with Uptown Wilmer, and they did not see any issues for themselves or their tenants in rezoning the property to general business. Mr. Kim Purus gets here to speak on behalf of Skylark Properties. If you guys have any questions for him, about that, I turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, this is a public hearing to rezone Skylark Properties. Is anybody from the public that wishes to speak? Anybody from the public that wishes to speak on the rezone of the Skylark Properties? Anybody who wishes to speak from the public on the Skylark Properties rezone? CNN, in hearing then, I'll bring it to the council table. Council, what are your wishes?
I'll make a motion to adopt the ordinance authorizing the rezone of Skylark Mall properties from shopping center to general business district. Assign it a number and publish the ordinance.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmas.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Thank you, Justice. Appreciate that. Next, we have Mayor's Housing Task Force presentation. Mr. Paul Brien.
Glad to see you here tonight. You've done a lot of work. I'm happy to be here. I've been thinking about being here for, what, five months we've been doing this?
Close to that.
If I had any reservations about being the chair, it was probably because I knew I was gonna have to do this. Tried to imagine how intimidating it's gonna be to stand in front of you all here. I'm not intimidated yet, or I'm working my way out of it, but I am glad. Yes, we have the housing task force. We've been in business such as it is for me, something like that, we began. Started out with a committee of 20 people. Some of them are on the council here. Others, people of high caliber from around the community. I was just really pleased to be a part of that group, and then to be named the chairman of that group. I was kind of odd man out. I don't belong to anything. I'm just a guy. Did I get closer? But they saw fit to name me the chairman, and this is what you get, and I'm glad to be here. I will say that it's been fun and instructive to do this, and I'm gonna give you a brief report about that. I've been told that council members are very faithful to do your homework. Did I get that right? So you all know what the plan looks like, the report looks like, and I hate to repeat things that you already know, but for the sake of the audience and, ah, the press, you are the press? Okay. Did you get a copy of the report at all?
I still.
It was included in our packet.
Okay, all right. Well, I'm still gonna just hit some of the highlights of the report, even though you know it pretty well. Let's see, where's my notes? Okay, first thing I want to do is commend Mayor Calvin for conceiving this task force. It was a visionary moment, I think, or two. I will say to him and to the rest of you, and I don't know if it's okay to kind of scold you, but it's long overdue. This should have been done maybe years ago, years and years ago, but here we are. And so, Mayor Calvin had the insight, and I don't know what it was you were looking at, that said, "We gotta do something," but you did it, and the rest of you saw fit to go along with it, and I commend you all for that. I also want to commend the committee. They were quite faithful to come. There were a few dropouts along the way. I think it was because of my long agendas.
They were long.
They had to be there to appreciate that, yeah. I don't make any apologies for that. I mean, this is serious business, and there was a lot of stuff to talk about, and we even got through a couple of them. But we made progress. It began, I would say, with a handout that Mr. Walker gave us at probably the second meeting, or was it the first meeting, that showed maps of vacant properties in town that were theoretically available for development. And that was quite, quite a knockout. I mean, to see that there is that many vacant properties. So we seized on that as being kind of the key to where we're gonna go for new housing, single-family now housing we're talking about, the idea to fill in these vacant properties with new housing. It didn't take long for us to segue into considering, well, we don't just have vacant properties. We have existing properties with houses on them. Some of them are in disrepair and maybe need to be torn down. Some of them are in disrepair and can be remodeled. And so, we came to the consensus quite quickly that these are the resources that we have to work with if we want to build new housing. They're the low-hanging fruit, if you will, for properties to build housing on. The properties that are on the fringe of the city and even outside of the city, they're new development, and they're more expensive, right? New infrastructure, streets, da-da-da, all that stuff. These vacant and other properties that are in town, by and large, that's paid for already. So the starting cost of a new house is cut down. I don't know how much, but it's significant. I don't even want to guess the number, but it's less. Even if it was $20,000, $30,000, then what you would pay if you were out in the fringe, that's a bunch of money, especially for a first-time homeowner, right? So, we very quickly zeroed in on those are the resources that we have to work with. We didn't think about trying to get public money, grants, loans, whatever. We thought in terms of using the resources we've got, the lots, which we don't own yet, but which are available if you're willing to do the work to gain access to them, and I'll talk about that a little bit more later. If we get those, and then we use other resources that are in the community, some of which is public, government, you know, city, county money, and you've already talked about putting, I don't know, $150,000 is the number I remember, from the city into a pool that would be available for single-family development. And the county, if I remember right, has talked about a similar number. Now, $300,000, that's something, but you can't do a lot. So I'm hoping, over time, you'll be willing to up the ante on that. So that means that in order to have any impact, we need to have private money as well. So that all moved us in the direction of the idea of a public-private partnership. City, county, and then the private community that has an interest in having more, having more single-family housing. We found there was a kind of a model for that in Olmsted County. Not a fully developed model, but the principle is there of having private-public, and then the third element is the Wilmer area community foundation. You need the foundation to take the private money. People, private people, don't like giving money to government, right? We understand that, right? So if you try to raise money for building housing, they might, they might have, you know, an affection for that, but they would much rather give it to a private party. So the Wilmer area foundation would be the private party that holds the money and combines that money then to go into projects for building new single-family housing. The third element of that, and you saw this in the handout, is you need to have an administrator. All right, somebody's got to actually do the administrative work. Now, the city doesn't want to do it. The county doesn't want to do it. What we do have, and you know about the Canoe County HRA, very able and experienced entity, lots of experience handling government money, grants and loans and stuff like that. And they are very much willing and able to be the administrative entity for whatever money comes in from the city and the county and the private, the public. Okay, so that's, we've got the three, the three main pieces there. So that's the idea to, how we would propose that new housing, single-family housing would be built in the city of Wilmer. But not only in the city of Wilmer, we realized fairly soon on that the model of how to develop isn't just good for the city of Wilmer. This works for any town, any town. And the problems that the city of Wilmer has for development and lack of housing are common to all the cities in the county, right? So now, even though they're not, they don't have a housing task force, and they probably don't even know about this yet, but sooner or later, the thinking is that they're gonna say, you know, what they're doing in Wilmer is a good idea, and we got vacant houses, or vacant lots, we have houses that are, need rehab, we have properties or houses that maybe should be torn down, and they would, maybe would like to kind of join the group and be a part of a countywide effort. But it all begins with the city of Wilmer. You're in the lead here. You set the tone, and if it's a good idea, the other cities will fall in line sooner or later, as their needs become manifest to them. So, I want to highlight the features of the, of the plan that are maybe most important. I'm not gonna go through all of them. The first, the first addendum I have was about the need for housing. Said the need for housing is urgent. At the second meeting, which I, then I assumed to be the chair, I said, you know, how bad is the need? You know, we know anecdotally that there's a need for it, but just tried to gauge from the members of the committee what they thought the need was. So I said, on a scale of one to 10, what do you think? And the suggestions were eight, nine. I remember Mr. Walker said 13 or something like that. So after that, we didn't bother to talk about needs anymore. I mean, there's no doubt about the need, and no doubt about the urgency of the need to do something. So we moved on then to try to figure out, well, so how are we gonna begin to satisfy that need? Second finding I've got here is about construction labor shortage. This was a surprise that came up. We have two builders on the committee, and one of them, Tim Carlson, he mentioned kind of offhand one time, that just having trouble getting workers. So after the meeting, I talked to him and said, well, what about this, Tim? What does, what does this mean? Yeah, we can't get enough laborers. What that means then is that builders are probably about up to speed in terms of the building that they can do. They don't have enough builders to build more than what they're already doing. So that kind of took us off on a little bit of a, not a rabbit trail exactly, but a track that says, we gotta do something about this. I mean, if we're gonna build new housing, you gotta have builders that are gonna do it, and if they're tapped out, how are we gonna get more workers for them? So, this is just an aside now. Since the committee ended, there's a, I'll call it an ad hoc committee of people that are talking to Ridgewater College about a customized training program for carpenters. And we're having a meeting tomorrow, talking with him, and I met with him last week, and I was just very encouraged about what he thought the college could do to recruit workers and train workers and get them ready to be online with builders that would hire them for as early as next construction season. Blow my mind, but he said it, and I have to believe that it's true. So just to let you know that that's in the works. Third finding is about the HRA. I mentioned them. We concluded that HRA needs to be the administrative entity of choice here, because they have experience and whatnot. And, see, I got about Realtor participation. We need, we need to have Realtors involved. I won't go into the details about that. Fifth finding, accommodate developers to create enticements to get involved with building. We heard this several times during meetings and after meetings about builder, and you guys have probably heard this too. They don't like some of the fees. Sometimes they don't like the limitations of ordinances, and I don't know, we don't, aren't any builders here or there. So I think they may be overstating it a bit, but, I mean, this is an attitude that they have, and they might be right, they might be wrong, but we need the builders to do the building, and so we need to accommodate the builders best we can. That mean, "we" is "you" now, because you guys control the fees and the ordinances. So put that out there for something to think about, to help, you know, get builders to buy in, and, you know, anything, any fees that you waive, theoretically, that's gonna lower the price, which we want that to happen too, right? And then, sixth finding about funding diversity. And then, sixth finding about funding diversity and community involvement, that's the part, I was mentioning about the, the private partnership here. You can't, you can't, the city can't do it alone, the county can't do it alone. But you working together and then bringing in the, the private parties, you can have enough, in theory, anyway, enough money to do, to do some really good building, a lot, a lot of building. Okay. I framed the philosophy in terms of big ideas. Now, we didn't talk about these big ideas before I wrote these down, but I, I, so these are, these are out of my head, but the committee agreed to them. So this is the committee's. They're, they're okay with this. Big idea behind, I call it, Wilmer Mayor's Housing Task Force Recommendations is to directly and indirectly increase development of new single-family housing in the communities of Caney County. So that's the main thing. Uh, big idea is to say to the community and the world that vacant lots and deteriorated properties in Wilmer's, Wilmer's mature neighborhoods are desirable locations for new single-family housing development. I think this is really, really key. You got a, a, a neighborhood with, you know, tall grass and the property is derelict. I mean, that's not, it's not attractive, and it doesn't invite investment in the neighborhood. You don't like that, it's not good for you, it's not good for the city, not good for the neighborhood. So we need to kind of do what we can do to kind of change the attitude about all neighborhoods. I live in a good neighborhood. Lot of, lot of improvements going on in my neighborhood. But I know, and you know too, I'm sure, that there's neighborhoods with that, that's not happening. So instead of improvements, the properties, values of the properties are going downhill. Not a good thing, not good for the people that live there, not good for taxes, just, just not a good thing. So you need to intervene here on those accounts and do whatever you can do to raise the, the level of, it's an aesthetic thing, but an investment thing in those neighborhoods. Big idea is to confirm these attitudes with public and private investments that will entice homeowners, new and old, to make private investments in homes, new and old, that fit architecturally with older homes and elevate the social, financial, and aesthetic value of all neighborhoods. It's a way of thinking about how to improve the, the city. Big idea is to invest public and private money in properties that are underproducing with respect to tax revenues, aesthetic images, and housing for people. Got to come, always come back to the fact that this isn't just about housing. We're talking about people here. Houses are for people, and so ultimately, we're trying to serve the people. And if the people, you know, can't find housing, I don't know where they go. Into the, the new apartments and who knows where they go, but we'd like, right, to have them live in town and invest in town. So we want to think in those kind of terms. And a big idea is to reclaim and develop properties that are underproducing with respect to their potential to provide single-family housing. How am I doing for time, Mr. Mayor?
Well, you've been going for about 18 or 19 minutes.
Oh, really?
So you're gonna have to speed it up just a bit.
Well, you told me I had some extra time.
I told you I had extra time, but we talked 10 minutes to start with. So keep going.
Okay, I'll, 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 okay, I'll try to go. Goals.
But I don't want to speak for the council. I mean, if the council wants you to slow down, they'll tell you, but kind of what I'm seeing is they want you to just pick it up a little bit. Pick up the speed. You're doing good reporting.
I'm, I'm going as fast as I can, I'm sorry. But there's a lot to talk about here, folks. Alright, goals. Provide a reliable supply of market-rate, single-family housing. Increase, these are goals now. Provide property tax revenues while developing new, single-family housing opportunities. Build homes on vacant lots that I mentioned. Rehabilitate unoccupied homes that are worthy of rehabilitation and then getting rid of the, the properties that just, they're unredeemable. So there's, there's work there for you to do. Now, I know that you have a, I don't know what the, the person is called, an inspector kind of person who's out there dealing with some of these, these properties, and that's a good thing. Uh, but we're suggesting that you need to kind of ramp that up to get at the, not, not just deal with the properties that are, have, have occupants, but those that don't have occupants. We want to convert these properties to something that's useful. And if they're, they can't be converted, then you buy them, you tear them down, and you make those properties available for new, single-family housing development. Let's check my notes. You, if you, if you decide to go along with this, this plan, there will be formed, as you read, a coalition. A public-private partnership coalition. And you'll have representatives from the council and others that you may designate to go and serve on this committee. So I want to just encourage you that you want to choose those representatives very carefully. Because those are the, gonna be the people that are gonna be watching out for your, well, let's see, for the city's housing interests. I would say, now you can check me on this, but I would say that historically, the city hasn't done a very good job of watching out for that. Now, you, a developer comes along and they want to build, you know, an apartment or whatever, you know, you'll, you say, yeah, do that, but other, taking, taking care of the cleanup work like this new inspector is doing. I mean, that, that person has been on the job for very long, right? So there's been years of, I don't know if this is too strong a word or not, but neglect with respect to those properties. So it's, it's a good thing that you're getting on board with those things, but you've got to be more, more aggressive with that, because now we're talking about doing that and blending that into the actual housing development. I'm winding down. Beauty of this idea here is that, is something that you can do, well, government, government, the local government, city and county and private interests, can do on your own without looking for grants and loans from the state or wherever. That's one way to go, but it's really hard to get money, a lot of money anyway, to build new, single-family housing. So the only way you can reliably assure that you can build any at all is if you just take hold and do it yourself. Maybe slower process, but you will be in control. And you won't be so subject to, you know, the, all, all the vagaries of state and federal government, which, you know, that money comes and goes. So you work with the money you've got, the other resources you've got, which are the, the properties. Questions?
Oh, I just want to thank you publicly, at the task force, I thank you for the work that you did. And I remember when Steve Gardner had asked you if you'd be willing to serve in the capacity of the chairperson for, for this very important committee. And, and you reluctantly said yes. Um, but as the council can tell, I mean, you've, you've put your heart and soul into this. You've put, you know, literally hundreds of hours into this.
I, I. You're exaggerating a bit there, but.
Well, close to. Um, but you, emails that you sent, and I remember specifically when you were getting close to putting a ribbon on your, on your ideas and the ideas that you had heard from the committee. And you came and met with me at my office and you said, Mr. Mayor, you're not gonna be happy with me because the report's not gonna say what you asked me to, the direction you asked me to go when this committee started. And I said, no, I said, I want this report to be the committee's report, not the mayor's report. And I think you probably remember that day, and, and you breathed a sigh of relief and said, this is what I heard, and this is what I'm reporting to you, and I'm glad that you're accepting of the report, not what you, it's not what you wanted, but it's what the committee came up with and found. So I really want to thank you for that and, and doing the hard work, knowing that you had the potential of getting some pushback, which I think you can rightfully say, and I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I was more than willing to listen to what you had to say and not push back too hard. So anyways, with that, questions for Paul from the council, Councilmember O'Brien?
It's not a question, but I just like to say the same thing. The mayor just said, for all the hard work you did. What I really respect about you, Paul, was how you got everybody involved. Our committee of over 20 people, and you got them all involved. They all had questions, and you did a very nice job of giving them the opportunity to say what they wanted to say. And you are 100% correct, this is way overdue. And we need to get on this as soon as possible.
Thank you, thank you. Councilmember Plowman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I echo what the mayor said and also what, what you spoke yourself. I think the idea for this, this task force was a great idea, long overdue. And, and I appreciate all the time of yourself and all the members and, and all the ideas that were put out there, especially this extensive document. I hope that this document can serve as a, a working roadmap going into the future. I'm, I'm done at the end of this year, so I, I, I can't continue to, to see this to fruition, but I can, I can speak with a little bit of, of personal knowledge. You know, it wasn't that long ago, although it, it seems like it was just a couple of years ago. But I was a young individual moving back to the area, and I looked around at different communities, because I was gonna be joining a family business. But I looked at different communities, and all of them had cheaper, more affordable housing, but I wanted to be in Wilmer. Uh, the only problem was is that in looking around, there wasn't any programs, there wasn't, you'd look around and there wasn't any, anything that, that could be seen. There were no programs or anything like that. So I had to take it upon myself to bootstrap the project. And so had it not been for my own sweat equity and maybe a little bit of generosity from, from a local builder and some subcontractors, I was able to, to, to work my way into my first home. And after doing that, just like you said, the neighborhood changed. It was a vacant, overgrown lot that had sat there for years and years and years. And that one structure being built, the house that I moved on there and renovated, then the next-door neighbor's renovated, and then the neighbor's two doors down from that renovated. And pretty soon, the entire neighborhood had new siding and windows and, and a bunch of new, younger families moved in. And I just think now, as I read through this document, if programs had been out there, when I was doing my research, when I was looking for a piece of vacant land, the piece of land I found, I felt like it was a needle in a haystack. And when I actually do my research now, years later on, I, I find that there's plenty of property, there is property. But I didn't know it at the time, and I, it wasn't easily found. And so I just think now, if programs are designed to encourage this type of development and remove the red tape, not, not throw money at it, so to speak, but remove the, the red tape and some of the obstructions that are in the way from, from the free markets doing what they do well, I really see the potential for success here with, with a situation like, you know, what I experienced personally, but then also other families, that maybe they don't have the opportunity or the ability to put in that sweat equity. If they can work with local builders who have the ability, worked in there through the removal of some of that red tape and some of, you know, some of those other things, and they can still turn a profit. I see some of these properties then being able to be built and occupied, and then neighborhoods being lifted up and, and, and just positivity all around. So I, 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 I wish something like this had, had been around. I wish that programs like this had, had been around, you know, 15 years back when I was getting on my feet. And, and I hope that the future council, you know, I hope that we accept this and, and really read into it. And then I hope that future council and, and leaders going forward and, and committees moving forward will put this into action and then also work with the other various entities that are nailed down in here, because I think there is a lot of good substance here. But just like other reports that we've commissioned and other research that we've had done and, and other documents that we've had compiled, it, it's only gonna, it's only gonna turn into anything if the leading body turns it into something. So I, I, I'm pleased with what's here, and I, I'll, I'll say it again. I hope that future leadership groups slash groups put it into action. So thank you for the good work.
Great personal testimony. Okay, just for comments, Councilmember O'Brien again.
One of the things I just wanted to say, Paul, and you know this, my, I've had family members been looking for a home now for quite a few months. And I have a very aggressive Realtor. And on average, he'll probably put up 10 homes. It's a first-time homeowner type situation. And we've only bid on one. These houses were so pathetic that I wouldn't, first of all, I wouldn't let her live in that area. And second of all, I would have to put in thousands of dollars just to get her in because of the conditions of these homes. I mean, it was, I, I mean, I can't believe it. I go into these homes and I look at the prices and I just shake my head. How can a young person buy a home like this and then go in and put 40, $50,000 to get it livable? And that's what we're running into.
Just some comments or questions for Paul? Again, Paul, thank you. I know, as you stated earlier in your opening comments, you didn't do this alone, there was a committee of 20 people that worked on this. I think it was 22, but we had a, we had a good-sized group that worked on it, and the demographics were just really great. Um, I know that the Wilmer Area Community Foundation is working on the next step and is working on the funding sources already. Um, and I've been in some meetings with them already in regards to this. But, so, so the action tonight is just to receive the report. And so it'd be just a motion to receive the report. By receiving the report, we are not taking any action. We're just acknowledging Paul's time and effort. And so we're just looking for a motion to receive the report. And as Councilmember Plowman said, hopefully, future councils will continue working on this and moving this forward. Um, this gives us action steps on what to do. When you look through the entire document, there's goals and objectives to each piece. There's steps and pieces that the council can choose to do or whatever. So I would entertain a motion if someone was so inclined to accept the report as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made in second at discussion. Paul in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that motion does carry. Thank you again, Paul, for your hard work.
Thank you, appreciate your thoughtful attention.
Thank you. Next, we have Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Annual Report. And I'm going directly to Brad. Mr. Peterson.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Calvin, and councilmembers. First off, you know, getting out and, and visiting our, our, our cities that we represent through the coalition is, is one of my, my favorite things to do. And, and I just saw another example of why that is. Uh, because then I get to hear about the good work that's being done here at a very, very local level, trying to come to local solutions to problems that are, are universal amongst our communities, but that are tailored from the ground up here from the Wilmer perspective. And so it's always very, very educational for me to be able to come and, and see these things and sit through these things. So I appreciate that opportunity. So again, my name is Bradley Peterson. Uh, I am with the firm of Flaherty and Hood from St. Paul. And we do the legislative and administrative work for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, which the city of Wilmer has been a member of for quite a while. And so we try to get out and visit as many of our cities as we can here in the interim between the legislative sessions and give you an opportunity to get a sense for the work that we've been doing, where some of the important issues stand. And then for us to get a sense of, of what your questions and, and concerns are heading into the next year's activity. And so just by way of reminder, the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities represents over- 100 cities outside of the seven county metro area. We work primarily in five issue areas at the legislature related to local government aid and property taxes, economic development, annexation and land use, transportation, environment and energy, and then a little bit around the labor and employment space. And so we really do try to focus in on those issue areas specifically from a greater Minnesota perspective. So I'm going to give you a little bit of, of, of the flavor of some of the things that we worked on. I'm not going to talk about all of the things that we've worked on in the last year, but certainly if you do have questions about some of, of the other issues, do please ask, ask me where we can certainly engage in that if, if that's something that you're interested in. Obviously, and this is well trod ground, so I won't spend a lot of time necessarily. The 2022 legislative session came in with a historic surplus, especially after a lot of the uncertainty around the COVID economy and what was going to happen in our communities. But from the state's perspective, they came in with a big surplus. It was a traditional year for a large bonding bill, a capital investment bill to make investments in infrastructure across the state. And that was really one of the things that we focused pretty, pretty deeply on this last legislative session. And there were, you know, as I said, lots of resources to address issues going on. Again, strong outlook in terms of the, the budget forecast. We'll get another forecast here for the state at the beginning of December, even though they call it the November forecast. And there we'll see what the outlook is here for the next year or two from the state's perspective in the economy. Also, there were some challenges. Obviously, we're still dealing with a little bit of, of COVID-related operations at the legislature. There were some hybrid meetings. The House of Representatives wasn't entirely in. Their building was basically locked for most of the session. Once they were in there doing meetings with, with the public and lobbyists, you had to be escorted in behind a locked door and then you were pretty promptly escorted out once your, once your meeting was done. The state senate was a lot more open, a lot more accessible. And so that was one of the issues. You know, I think we see issues around political polarization and, and things like that. And then they had some unfinished business from the 2021 session related to things like the worker hero pay, et cetera. Our top goals for the year, one of the things that we were really, did a lot of work on, and I'll, I'll spend more time here in a minute talking about that, was the local government aid program. Not only getting an increase for that program, which has not seen one in the last couple of years, but also an update to that formula. Pretty much every 10 years after the biennial census, we've gone back as a state legislature and as municipal lobbying groups and gone back and looked at the LGA formula, what's working, what's not working, what needs to be updated, are there things we can do there? So I'll talk a little bit more about that process. And then, as I mentioned, an infrastructure-focused bonding bill, which was not only water and wastewater funding through the Public Facilities Authority, but also some ideas around childcare, some ideas around housing and buying down that cost of public infrastructure, which does drive up the cost of new housing. But you guys have a solution here. If you're leveraging vacant lots that already have the infrastructure running by it, you've already been buying that down that cost. Some other things related to business expansion grants and then, as I mentioned, housing. Childcare, again, is an issue that we've spent a lot, a lot of time on. And then funding for city streets, both large and small. That's been a somewhat neglected issue at the, the state, especially for your neighbors who are less than 5,000 population. Again, third pandemic session presented its struggles. So we, you know, kind of tried to get to the legislature in any way we could. So it was in-person meetings, it was Zoom meetings, it was here, watch this video legislature that we, you know, created, press conferences, you see something that we did there with the mayor of Austin around infrastructure. And so we really did try to get to folks pretty much in, in any way they, we could and however they were there. So like I said, I wanted to spend some time drilling in on the, the LGA formula proposal because that is one of the things that across our cities, they have the most in common. It is very critical to the budgeting and providing services for our communities and keeping property taxes at a reasonable level compared to other communities across the state. And so starting pretty much a year ago, this month, in October of 2021, we gathered with the League of Minnesota Cities, the Metro Cities Organization and the Small Cities Organization, House and Senate nonpartisan staff who the legislature graciously sort of let us use as our experts to help us think through problems and run some math and that kind of thing. And then also some staff from the Department of Revenue because ultimately they are the ones who, who have to implement anything that we would come up. So we started by doing some studying, first looked to annexalize the existing formula. And what we found was that it was increasingly outdated. You know, the formula, the way it's constructed is meant to really sort of try to get at what are the attributes or, or traits of a community and the differences that drive different spending in different communities. And that's sort of, you know, a lot of math goes into that regression analysis and that sort of things that even if I wanted to try, there are people much smarter than I who would be able to do a better job. And so what we then got down to is trying to identify possible new need factors within the formula. And so as you know, the formula has two basic components. It's what, how do you calculate a city's need and then the property tax base that the community has to meet those needs. And every 10 years, like I've said, we've kind of gone through and tried to look at updating those need factors because that really is the meat and potatoes of the LGA formula and the thing that most people sort of jostle over going forward in terms of, of doing that. CGMC, I think, brought a lot of analytical capacity to that. We've got our own policy analysts on staff and then we also contract with a guy who's been doing this work for 40 years. And then the other expertise that we have in our office and, and a long history with the LGA program. So between the capacity that we had in our office, I think we were able to really sort of look at, you know, what makes for a good LGA formula overall, but then how does it impact those cities in greater Minnesota, most specifically our members? And so what we came up with, working with the other city groups, was a formula proposal that really maintains the basic architecture and structure of, of the LGA formula, that calculation of needs versus your property tax base sort of, of construction. The current formula does split cities into three different categories as it looks at them because obviously, you know, Wilmer is much different than Candy Ojai down the road and is certainly different than Eden Prairie farther down the road. And so, you know, we look at splitting these, these cities up into three categories, small, medium and large, for purposes of then applying different need factors that both best fit those size of communities. That's something that the current formula does, that's something that we wanted to retain. Same methodology for looking at your capacity to meet these needs, the property tax base, that sort of thing. And then the same basic calculation for how do you distribute a limited amount of money over the needs that there are there, right? Because you plug all of the needs into the, the LGA formula and the LGA formula says that statewide cities have needs of, I think we're at like $780 million per year. Obviously, there's only $564 million that's actually put into the program and then so how do you distribute that money? And like I said, the biggest change was to those need factors. But as we know, legislature failed to get not only a tax bill across the finish line, but all sorts of, of things. And so there were no changes to the LGA formula this last year. There was no changes to the level of funding this last year. There was a proposal that was on the table the last Saturday of session that would have put $30 billion into local government aid on the existing formula, which is also okay for our cities. But that again, failed to, failed to get final enactment. Just so you have a sense, and this is also a, a piece that is included in your printed materials that I gave you, sort of what every entity in state governments' basic proposal was. And so the far left there is the, you know, current law, just no changes to either the formula or the, the, the funding amount. The red column is the new formula and what we were asking for, which was an additional $90 million into the program. In 2013, when the legislature updated the, made the most recent significant updates to the LGA formula, they put $80 million into it at that time. And it helps sort of smooth things over, it gets you closer to where you need to be. And so that is where the city of Wilmer would have landed. And then along you, you can see everyone else's positions and, you know, the senate, again, would have been current law, the governor would have been current law, the House of Representatives, they actually latched on to our proposal. They liked the direction that it was headed, but didn't want to put quite the money, amount of money into it that we were advocating for. And so they said, we'll do the new formula and $34 million. But of course, as we know, we ended up with current law, the stasis because of the failure of the legislature to be able to kind of pull everything together at the very end. Again, I mentioned we did a lot of work on, on infrastructure this year. The, the main thing that we really focused on, and I was actually just at a meeting earlier today with the same group of folks, we partnered this last year with a number of the construction unions and then a couple of, of trusted environmental groups to say, okay, we, the state has a lot of money and there's a lot of federal money coming to do water and wastewater infrastructure. How do we think the best way to spend that is? And so this group came up with a package last year that was pretty ambitious in terms of a large amount of water and wastewater funding, some ongoing funding, some approaches to dealing with lead pipe and lead service lines, which is a, an emerging issue that that needs to be taken care of urgently in communities across the state. Again, legislature unable to get their act together, not able to get across the finish line. And so I think as we evaluate the outcomes of the election this year, we'll be trying to figure out, you know, what type of proposal that we want to bring forward. We know we need to do some things, there's lots of needs, and we think that this coalition that we put together of labor, environmentalists and, and us can be a pretty powerful one. Everything kind of came to an end, they just couldn't agree. The timeline is there, it's well trod. You know, there really is frankly, not a lot of excuses from my perspective for them to not get some of these big things done, especially a capital investment bill. You talk to any legislator, they're like, yeah, I want to do a bonding bill, yeah, we can do a billion dollars, that's no problem, yeah, we want to do infrastructure. I've never seen so many people who wanted to do something, who agreed on what they should do, actually not accomplish it. And so that's a pretty, pretty significant disappointment. But nonetheless, we move on and we did, you know, throughout the summer, reiterate calls for them to come back into special session and to get it done. There were lots of voices that were also likewise making that call, but again, they just couldn't get their, their collective act together between the House, Senate and Governor. So looking ahead, obviously, you all know, just judging from all the signs on the highways and in people's yards, we've got an election coming up. We had redistricting this last year and so the districts are somewhat shuffled, but many of them retain a similar shape and size, especially in greater Minnesota. They have largely the same sort of shape, but many of them grew by just a little bit to accommodate the greater population that goes into making these districts. All 201 legislators are up for election, as are all of our constitutional officers, governor, secretary of state, et cetera. You know, and, and I think a lot remains to be seen in terms of the election. I think it is more unpredictable maybe now than it would have been in May or, or April or, or June of this year. I think there have been some dynamic changes in terms of, of where things land. And again, I, I think it's going to be difficult to predict right now where things figure out on the legislative races. One of the things that we did do, and I, you can access this online, is every year, election year, we put out a primer for candidates on all of our issues. LGA, wastewater treatment, childcare, annexation and land use, we did a little bit of in labor and employment stuff this year, we send it to all, everybody who's going to be on the ballot for the legislature. We receive a lot of really good feedback from urban legislators, suburban legislators, rural legislators, Democrats, Republicans, on this is a really, really great resource. And so this is something that you can access online. Honestly, anybody who's running for a city office should maybe take a look at this because it does, I think, get to a lot of the issues that, that you guys deal with. And coming up, because there will be so many new legislators, CGMC and all of our cities are going to play a pretty critical role in educating all of those new folks. Now, your folks are not going to change that much. I think that much is, is, is for certain. But out of the 201 legislators, we know that before any vote gets cast, that there's going to be 47 new legislators. A full quarter of the legislature is going to turn over just by virtue of retirements, redistricting, all of that. And so there is a significant job ahead of all of us in terms of getting in front of these folks, educating on them, on the issues that are important to us. And so that's work that CGMC is going to be doing over the next couple of months and that's the work that we're going to need to engage with our, our cities to help us with. Like I said, you guys are probably not going to be changing, but there's going to be a lot of change, change around the state. Couple of upcoming events, we've got our fall conference here coming up in Alexandria in about a month. And this is really where we sit down and we go through our policy priorities that a number of CGMC committees have been working on and talk about, you know, what, talk about the outcome of the elections, because we'll know that by then, and kind of how are we going to approach the work of the session. We've got State Auditor Blaha coming to speak, Commissioner Harrington, Public Safety coming to speak. We've got a, a good panel of media folks from the Capitol talking about their perspective and the role that media plays in covering elections. And then we've got just the business of, of adopting our positions and that sort of thing. One of the things that actually the, the previous speaker, the chairman reminded me of is we're going to have a conversation about workforce development and the needs that our communities have about workforce development and, and some of the innovative things that some of your neighbors in southwest Minnesota are trying to look at in terms of, of enhancing and developing their workforce. We've got our summer conference coming up in Thief River Falls next year, next July, which is going to be good. It's going to be a hike for a lot of folks coming from some parts of the country, but no more of a hike than folks coming from Ely or East Grand Forks down to Red Wing this last summer. So we try to go back and forth, north, south. And then my favorite event, we've got our Legislative Action Day coming up this January. We bring folks in to educate our members on the issues, where things stand, talk about the lay of the land, have you go and meet with your own legislators and advocate and talk to folks. And then we gather at Mancini's for a steak and, and maybe some beverages and some, some good conversation afterward. That's always a great event. And it's one where you get to interact with your city colleagues quite a bit, but then the Mancini's event, we get a good, a good group of legislators who come out for that and it's a good chance to meet folks from, folks from around the state in a very informal sort of way. So we very much appreciate that opportunity. And so with that, I really do thank you for allowing me to come out and give you a little bit of an update and giving you a chance to sort of get a sense of at least a little bit of what we've been working on. And then also give you a chance that if you do have comments or, or questions or anything else that I can answer for you while I'm standing here, I'm certainly more than happy to try.
Sounds great. Thank you for your report. Also, any questions for Mr. Peterson? Well, Bradley, I just want to thank you for driving out to Wilmer. I know you know the route well. You've been here once or twice. We do appreciate that. We appreciate the work that you do. You know, the, the senate, I think, passed a bonding bill off of the senate floor, but it did not get past the senate floor. And so when it went to the House, the House and the governor did not move it forward, but the, the senate did have a bonding bill passed.
So this last year, actually, the senate did not, I'm afraid. You know, they, it was really kind of a staring contest. You know, I know that there was a bonding bill that was being assembled by the senate and I think that there were spreadsheets floating around, but there, there, I don't believe was, was, was floor action. You know, because constitutionally too, at least for anything to actually be done, it does need to start in the house. And so, and they didn't do their work either. And, and so it was...
You're correct. They, they had it prepared, they were ready to go, but...
Yep, they, they certainly had some ideas in the drawer and ready to go and, and...
The House had to blink first.
Yeah, and that was, yep, exactly. And that's, you know, and that's, you know, part of the whole, whole dynamic there. There's, you know, again, lots of folks with, I think, good intentions and, and ideas and they've got their sort of spreadsheet in their drawer and the, the house has theirs and the governor has theirs and, boy, just couldn't kind of get it together. I mean, and, and in all honesty, the, the House was a problem for us on some of the things that they wanted to do around wastewater. Frankly, they had some phenomenally dumb ideas that would have destroyed these programs, made them inaccessible to cities in rural Minnesota. And so we had to deal with that before we could even get to some of the bigger picture stuff here. So we'll see going forward how things go and, and hopefully we can get something done.
And the rumor on the street is that after the elections are over, they're going to call them back? Are you hearing that as well?
I have heard that as a possibility. You know, I think there have been a couple of, of points at which folks have said that they could come back immediately after the end of session, there was talk. And then the next mile post was, well, let's go through the primary. You know, after the parties kind of shuffle out and, and then we don't have all of the noise of far left or far right challenges being a distraction. So we passed that mile post and, and, and didn't get there. I have again heard now that, that the, the general election could be another mile post. You know, that is floating out there. I will admit to myself being, and this is again, my very, very own editorial opinion, somewhat cynical about the possibility of that happening for a number of reasons. I think one, you know, by the time they're able to organize themselves and get there, you're into Thanksgiving, you're into the holidays. I think it's going to be very hard to get legislators want to come back in December to do this work. I think you'll also have a whole bunch of new legislators who are going to be waiting in the wings, kind of shuffling their feet and like, well, shoot, that, I thought I was elected to do that, right? And so I think there's going to be some, some inter-party and caucus dynamics of the people coming in versus the people who are there. And then you don't know, you know, if there is a significant change in, let's say the House flips and goes Republican. I can imagine that the new Republican majority would be the ones... would be the ones wanting to be the ones driving the show on shaping up a bill. And so I think it is, it's always a possibility. You never say never. I have heard the same sort of rumors, but personally, I've become pretty cynical about the possibility.
Well, that's, that's disappointing to hear. So anyways, thank you for your report and safe travels back.
Thank you very much and appreciate your being here. And if you can make it to the fall conference, you can still sign up. Have a good rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Next, we have consideration of an introduction of an ordinance increasing the filing fee for municipal offices. Mr. Box, our operations director for the city.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, council. Tonight, you will be asked to consider an introduction of an ordinance. Again, this is just the introduction of an ordinance for filing fees for elected office. Currently, the city of Wilmer charges $5 to file for city office. Under state statute, you can amend that and go up to a limit not to exceed $40 to file. And that is what's being proposed before you tonight. We did a little background on this issue. It was provided today from our city clerk. This issue was, or this item was brought to, to council and committee format in 2021, I believe. And kind of, it stayed at that point. It was not brought forward from there. So just for some comparison, from that $20 range, there's four of our comparable cities that are in that $20 range. The county by state statute, this isn't really a fair comparison. They're set by statute. They're at $50. Then you have some smaller cities in that five, that are still at that $5 range. So again, this is purely a council decision, but if you've got any questions on background or why we're, why we're proposing this, I'd be happy to, happy to take those questions.
So basically, what, what's happening here is that staff is bringing to us so that the full council has an opportunity to hear and be involved in a discussion regarding an ordinance of increasing the filing fee for municipal office. We can go up to the $40 amount and staff would probably like some direction when they prepare the ordinance, what that number would be if you'd like to do that. But then we'd have the public hearing on Monday, November 7th, which then would meet the requirements for having that, that filing fee set prior to the election. So if there's discussion, I'm sure they would like it. If you like the $40 amount, I'm sure they're just happy to move it forward at $40 as well. But it's up to you. This is a policy, policy decision for the council. Any direction that anybody wants to give to staff? Councilmember Fagerley.
I would say if there has to be an increase, go up to $10. I mean, look at this last time, no one filed other than the people that are on the councils.
Okay. Any other discussion? Councilmember Nelson?
Would you just review again what other community, where other communities are at?
Sure. So for our comparables, this is just what was prepared in 2021. For example, Albert Lee Hutchinson, Owatonna, and not really a comparable, but Mankato, they're at that $20 range. Smaller cities, Alexandria, Worthington, Montevideo, $2. Marshall, Fairville, Fairmont, $5. Morehead, it's $5 as well. Rochester, not a comparable, $50 in the county, like I said, but set by state statute is $50. So not, not a one to one, but just to give you an idea of what is also being charged for elected office in this county anyways.
Councilmember Davis.
Do you know how long it's been at five?
I do not.
Okay. Just curious.
Forever. I will just, we'll just say that.
I know it's been five for over 22 years.
I can, I can, I can look into that and get it back to you. I can have that written out the next month.
29 for you. 29 for sure. It's been at the same fee. So, Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I don't think upping the amount is, is an unreasonable thing, but I, I think, I guess, from my own perspective, this is almost purely psychological because it doesn't amount to any significant amount of money. But I don't think we would like to send the message as though we want it to be at all cost prohibitive for individuals to file because we would, you know, we consider it a service to the city of Wilmer. So I, I think the $10 amount is reasonable. I would be amenable to a motion of that caliber.
Who can make this motion?
I can make that as a motion. We set the public hearing then, too?
I will second that.
So a motion has been made to set the filing fee amount at $10 and set a public hearing to hear the ordinance on November 7th. Additional discussion to the motion. Councilmember Davis followed by Ask.
I think it should be 30. Just to be in line with the other cities our size and we're just going to have to raise it again. I mean, the cost of everything is going up.
Councilmember Ask.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I already agree with Councilwoman Davis. I think that $10 strikes me as being low. I mean, we can play the game all night about trying to get into like the, the heads of people who are possible candidates and what's a true deterrent for them and what's not. I mean, I, I think we could exceed this, this state statute and still not really deter very many people, if anyone. But it seems to me that, you know, we're looking for serious candidates. And, you know, if we're getting 25, $30, I don't know. I don't know that it makes a, a big difference, but I still like being closer to that 40 than, than five.
Additional comments or questions? Okay. Does anybody want to offer a friendly amendment? Councilmember Palmer.
For the sake of consensus, meeting in the middle would be $20. I'm sorry. I tried.
Councilmember, Councilmember Butterfield.
You know, we have to look at what's best for Wilmer, not what's other towns are paying. We have to look what's best for Wilmer. Fagerley said it just right, was we didn't have anybody really sign it up. I, I would say keep that high.
I didn't want to make that as a, as a...
I don't know if it matters.
I know.
Just forward on the original motion.
Oh. Councilmember Osmos.
I, I don't really have a strong feeling anywhere, but 20 is a good compromise to me.
I'd offer that as an amendment.
Second. A friendly amendment to up the amount from 10 to $20. Discussion over the $20. All in favor of the amendment to increase the amount to $20 signify by saying aye. Those opposed?
Aye.
That motion carries. Your direction?
Thank you.
Next, we have, I'm sorry?
I'm just wondering about if that was a vote on the...
I'm sorry. That was a, that was, yeah. Okay. So we increased the amount to $20. Now we have the filing fee set at $20 and a public hearing set for November 7th. Discussion to that motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion carries.
Did we have a motion and a second on that? That would be the original?
Yes. Motion, motion was made by Fagerley, seconded by Palmer. Next, we have consideration of the introduction of an ordinance increasing salary for elected officials. Mr. Box.
All right. So this is the awkward time of year when the council gets to talk about their own salary. No, I'm kidding. This is actually a great opportunity for the council to, to sit down and really look at, look at the elected official's salary, not only for, really, it's, it's, it's looking into the future, I think, at what you value your time, what you value future council members and mayor's time put into this, into this position. So right now, this is again, just the introduction of the ordinance. This can only be done during or by, before the election. So really, time is of the essence at this point to increase your salary. You can decrease your salary at any time, but you are limited to when you can increase council salary. So again, this is the introduction. The amendment or in your packet, you can see the comparable cities. Currently, Wilmer sits approximately right in the middle of its comparable cities. It's not a bad place to be, but however, again, we want, I want you to think about how you value your time, how you value, value the time of future elected officials, on where you think that position more, better aligns with, for that salary. So the current proposed salaries for the mayor is $19,250 and the current proposed salary for the council is $12,500 and an increase for mayor pro temp to $750. This would put you at the top of your comparable cities. I, at this point, I think that's okay, but there's always room to, to adjust that, however you, however you see fit. This dollar amount is already built into the proposed budget for 2023. That was already approved by the council in September. And I'll leave it at that. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. I had, I had, I had asked staff to look into this issue. And when I was out trying to solicit people on for the mayor's office, as I had, I had stated that I was not going to continue as the mayor. And so I made probably close to 20 some calls to different people, asking if they were interested. And the number one thing that I, that I was told is that you really need to increase the salary of your elected officials. And then I asked that question more, I dug in a little bit deeper on that. And I said, are you talking the mayor's salary? Are you talking both? And the answer was both. To Councilmember Fagerley's comment a bit earlier, you don't get a lot of people to apply to, to a candidate, to a candidate of office when they hear the compensation level. So this is an attempt to increase that, not that saying that anybody should be voted out and we want more people to run against council members. What it's saying is that the constituents are telling us that that probably should be at a higher number. And staff came up with this number. Mine, I believe, was considerably higher than this at one point. But this is a number that staff came back and said, this is something that, that we feel comfortable of proposing. So again, you can, you can decrease your salary at any time, but this is the only time that you get a chance to increase it. So if you, if you're into it a year and you say, you know what, we're getting, we're paying ourselves too much. We want to, we want to decrease. You can do that. The first year I was elected, so close on to, on to eight years ago, I was contacted by two council members. And at that time, they wanted the mayor's salary to go up to $24,000, $2,000 a month. And I had done the research at that time. I had Mr. Halliday do the research, came back and then I reported back to the council that I wasn't going to move that action forward of pay, of increasing the pay. At that time, it was to increase the, the council members' pay up to $12,000, the mayor to $24,000 is what I was, what two council members came to me with. And so then we didn't do anything because I brought it back to council. I said, if you want to increase it, you know, let me know and we can prepare a motion or an ordinance for that. And there was not support to do that at that time. And so that was probably after I'd been in office, probably less than six months that that was done. So, so this is in front of you. Again, I, I think these numbers are good, solid numbers. These are numbers I certainly would support. Certainly the work that you all do. If you took your hourly time, you probably figure out that you're probably only making a couple bucks an hour. You know, it's not unusual for me as the mayor to have 20 plus, probably even closer to 25 meetings a week that I attend. Of course, during COVID, that didn't happen. But, you know, it's, I mean, as the mayor, you're doing a lot of stuff. And I know you as council members are as well. Some of you more than others. But, but I would strongly support what staff is recommending here in the compensation level. You guys do good work. You guys do hard work. And I think by increasing these amounts would be, would be a benefit to our citizens, not simply the council. So it's in your hands. Councilmember Palmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I can speak safely then because this, this will not affect me in any way. But I would also concur with, with that, what you said. It has been talked about a few times in the, in the past eight years that the both of us have been here. But especially with regards to this last election, I also was contacted by various individuals who were interested in the position they were interested in, in serving. And, and I honed in on, on three specific individuals that I, I believed would have been good, solid candidates for the, for the job. Their primary driver was definitely not financial because I, I don't see that this dollar amount change here would have necessarily, you know, it's not a life altering amount of money. However, the one thing that they, they did all mention is, you know, we have families, we're busy, our, our time is worth something. And if we're going to give that time up, then we need to know that we're, you know, that we're doing something constructive and that we're, that we're a part of, that we're a part of a, a greater good. But then also it is nice to have some compensatory value there that can also go back into the household because, because finances are strained. And, and there are families that have, you know, another member of the family has maybe picked up part-time work for extra money, vacation money, spending money, bills. And so every little bit helps. And I just, I found it quite ironic that the topic was brought up by, by a few solid individuals that were in favor and spoke favorably about, about this higher amount. And none of those three ended up filing. And so that, that sort of spoke to me. Where the final dollar amount is, I'm okay with, with it being in this realm. I don't, I don't know the exact process and I, it's difficult if we, if we try to come to a very specific dollar amount away from, deviating away from staff's recommendation. But I'm comfortable because I believe that the, the budget that our city operates, the, the dollar figures that our city operates with and the amount of time and effort and energy and, and otherwise that goes into it, I believe. I believe the time put in justifies it. So going forward, I think, you know, the last time that this was amended or this was changed was a long time ago. And so I believe that whatever change would take place would last a long time into the future, I would assume. So being on the, being on the front end of that, in my mind, would be okay. I guess I, that begets a question. I'll close with that. Does staff know the last time this was changed?
Off the top of my head, I do not. I do know the ordinance does reference language of the early 90s. I don't know if it goes back that far, but Judy, city clerk, do you know off the top of your head? We can find that information out for next week, too, just to have that for council reference, coming when the last time the ordinance was updated.
I, and I tried to do some research a few years back and I do believe it. My research showed that it went into the 90s as well, but I wasn't able to trace it back beyond that. But again, I guess that, that if, you know, inflation adjusted over the past at least two decades, possibly three, you know, that change, the, the current pay was, was decided to be what it is and that's lasted up until now. So I would assume whatever we decide now, if we do decide to change it, that could possibly last decades into the future. So with that in mind, thinking how money may change decades into the future, the, the dollar change here doesn't seem quite as significant with that, I will.
It does look like 2006 was the last time this was amended.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
I was off by too much. I told Councilmember Fagerley, I think it was between 2005 and 2007. So...
There you go.
Like I said, I wasn't off by too much.
And before that was 95. So...
And I know Councilmember Fagerley reminded me that this has been in front of the council numerous times, but has not been, but not been moved forward. So I know when I brought it up eight years ago, it was not a motion. It was a discussion, but it never received a motion. So, so Councilmember Palmer, that, that puts you and I in good positions to speak to this because we're not going to be here. So we have no gain. speak to this, because we're not going to be here, so we have no gain. So, you know, a motion would, would be appreciated if you were so inclined to be forced into a motion. For the public hearing, of course, at which time it can be lowered, it can be lowered at any time. Councilmember Nelson.
I was going to offer the motion, but I would wait. I will defer to Councilmember Plowman if he wants to do it.
Does, point of clarification, does the motion include the dollar amount or just setting the public hearing?
Well, it would be setting the public hearing only, but it would be with staff's recommendation. Once we had the motion, then we could have discussion on the dollar amount, if that was what your desire was.
Okay. Well, seems fitting then. With that said, I will make a motion to follow staff's recommendation based on the dollar amounts presented to us and introduce, a motion to introduce the ordinance amending the salaries for the elected office and set the public hearing date from Monday, November 7th, 2022, at 6:30 p.m.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you. If you have ideas on compensation different than what has been presented tonight, make sure and get that to staff so that they can be prepared at that time. So, thank you. Next, we have a consideration of the sale of THC product licenses. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you, there's, there were three business, local businesses that are interested in selling the THC products. And per our ordinance you recently adopted, it, the license has to be approved by the council.
Okay, so this would be looking for a motion to approve the sale of THC products licenses pending the police department approval on a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second.
It was made in second. Discussion. Councilmember Davis.
I'm curious why there's two Sally tobaccos?
Two different locations.
Is it the same owner?
Same owner, but different locations. So each location has to be approved.
This is questions or comments? Just for the councils, I know we wrestled with the fee amount, and this is not about fee. And I just want to update you. New London did pass an ordinance, and their fee is $2,200. So theirs is actually higher than ours. Okay, so we have a motion that's been made and seconded to the consideration of the licenses, licenses for selling THC products within the city of Wilmer. Roll call.
Councilmember Osk.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes. Next, we have a consideration of approval of the donations for the past, for the second quarter of 2022. Ms. Thompson.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, before you are the donations that we received for the third quarter in 2022. And I will read those accordingly. $800 from Kensington Bank, Bench, Swanson Field. $300 from Ridge Road College for the kids' summer camp. $100 Darlene Bradberg for the Fire Explorers. $1,000 Christina Swanson for the Fire Explorers. $28,000 from the Wilmer Baseball Association to the Orange Field Burn Project. $100 from Five Star Waltz for Senior Lunch Day. $250 Dulies Petroleum for the Senior Lunch Day, and $100 from Hormel Financial Service Corporation for the Senior Lunch Day.
Moved to approve with a letter of thank you.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the donations and have a letter, thank you letter sent. Discussion. All in favor of roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Osk.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Members of the council, have any community pride announcements? See, in hearing none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Second.
Motion made and seconded, we adjourn.
Thank you.
So you seen that?